Over the park and I sit there and, you know, observe, but I, you know, and I've seen them over there relations and, and, you know, public relations and the kids come to the house, which is great, uh, instead of running away from them. So they're building a relationship, which is good, but I think, uh, you know, even I know as a kid, I saw a kid on a bubble pole, and I'm saying twice, and I don't think they care.
We do have some campus there that. Right. Do you think we would be more in our favor to have recycling cans here or trash cans with a couple of signs of the fines for littering?
Well, that, that, you know, and I was gonna say, I didn't have that one out there, but, um, I, I know that there is a fine for littering, so it's like, we can rack in the, the dough there and, and I think the parents is where it needs to be. And I know a lot of these kids are hanging out there after school because they get picked up there. Uh, apparently they've been told through the schools not to, but, you know, it's the park and my kid's sixteen and he likes to go over there and play. And I know in the past, there was a rule that you had to be, when we first did the park, uh, you had to be over there with two, adult supervision, which I don't know what happened with that rule. And that's, you know, you know, me, cause you're squalling for the kids that are good. And I had, I had some, I had a group of kids that were standing with me as I was talking to two of the kids and she, she told me, she wasn't trying to be rude, but I was wasting my time talking to this kid, cause he wasn't, he didn't care. And, uh, so I feel bad for them, cause I said, well, you need to tell these people. And she says, well, we're gonna get beat up if we try to hold our friends or these other people accountable. They're scared, they're scared of what the other kids will say. But when I was last, it was napkins and Taco Bell. It was just, it's, it's just, it's sad. It's sad to see such a expensive, brand new, uh, park, you know, there's, uh, I'm surprised that there is a bunch of feedings, to be honest, which is good.
And that's something I love.
Yeah. Well, I see that because my neighbors are found, uh, inappropriate drawing of a, a, of a bodyguard. Oh, that one's okay. So, yeah, that, she said, what is that? I said, I don't know. So, um, but yeah, that's, I think, I don't know if there's more trash bins and bins necessarily. I gave the kid a garbage bag. That's a big challenge than to help me. It is, you know, but, but if somebody's out there doing it. No, he said he picked up trash from night before. That's all he did, John. Uh, but then I gave him a bag and he decided he doesn't pick them up or never got them. And I said, well, I'm gonna be done before he even leaves. He had helped, so I got the bag back.
I appreciate you throwing everybody in the stuff. I do wanna tell you that I've been speaking with some, uh, parents in the community as well, and we're trying to also create some other opportunities for teens so that the park isn't their sole destination. Right now, there are very few opportunities for programs for teens locally where they, well, our library is a fantastic resource. That is a very direct kind of, um, window of kids, right? There's a very specific child that goes to library and continues to go to library through the teens. So, um, I've got some great ideas. I have a couple of parents who are really, you know, pumping those ideas in and kind of giving feedback. And I've been working a little bit with the school, um, uh, school board and getting some ideas off of them. So, um, I think that we have some stuff hopefully coming up, but I do like, you know, work ideas and put more garbage cans. That was the first thing I thought, because at least that is an opportunity to make it convenient, right? Cause sometimes people, you think that's out of convenience. If they have to walk five feet to throw something out, they might just toss it on the ground. But if they have to walk one foot or two feet, they might be more likely to participate in garbage in the can or garbage on the ground. And that's a cost effective thing that we can do, uh, we can do, right? Yes. We have lots of cans, right? Lots of EFS cans.
Yeah, we've actually had more.
Just put every foot, make a row of garbage cans. I'm not being sarcastic. I do understand. I walk rocks in the neighborhood and all I do all day long is fill every walk. I fill a poopy guy with just garbage and litter, but I find it in the city. It's, it's prevalent everywhere. It's really infuriating.
So I don't know why this just randomly hit me right now, just with ideas. Uh, cost effective may not be the option with this one, but if we could be more fun with the trash, maybe with basketball and, you know, you know, I don't know, something creative.
Candy you literally just leaned over.
Oh, yeah. Because it, you know, there's gotta be some kind of incentive or something. But, uh, they, 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 they really don't care. I've been tempted to just just sit over there in my hand and chair and just watch them and see what they do. But, you know, I don't know if that's my idea, so.
You, you mentioned violence. Are you, are you witnessing a lot of fights right now?
There, there has been, yeah. I mean, it seems like in the past, that was a little bit busier than it was. Um, now it's, it's, it's not so much, I think, cause we built the relationship with the cops, I believe. I don't know. Uh, horseplay, very rough horseplay. So sometimes it's hard to just say for whether it's horseplay or not. Like, I saw a kid that acted like he was waving a gun around and he held a kid down. And I had to bust up the nighters and make sure that someone, right? But, uh, you know, and then, and then there's some of them that drive. So when they're driving, they're in and out of the parking lot, whipping around the corner and, uh, you know, I try to keep myself behind my wall of trees as much as possible, but, uh, you know, you hear everything too. So there's, you know, the weekends are beautiful. I hear little kids laughing and then there's the weekdays when I hear nothing but passing and screaming, you know? And I'm not, I'm not a kid. I get it, they're kids, but there's gotta be some kind of level of balance. I think as far as branching off on other ideas for them to do, uh, I, I believe that it's gonna require something with supervision, uh, you know, even the state department has been talked about in the past. That would probably end up having the same kind of issues unless there was supervision.
Yeah, it's absolutely having these exact same issues.
Right.
Litter and fights and, and, you know, turmoil, I wanna call hot fights, turmoil.
Sure, right, right.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it's an ongoing discussion that we have, uh, you know, all the, all the time with, uh, the police and the PPW or the school system. And I was glad that they, they did hire, uh, the monitor over there. We tried to hire somebody, even the applicants. So, I mean, there's, again, maybe people want, you know, to, to volunteer or something like that, or we have to, you know, to, to monitor the park. We have to give a little training program, some instructions on how, you know, we want things handled and whatnot. Uh, we are passing parental responsibility ordinance, so that will give police departments and thieves in terms of issuing some citations to parents of some of these children that, uh, are not behaving in, uh, some form or fashion. So, uh, it's gonna require a multifaceted, I think, approach and we're never gonna get to the magic top of the mountain where everything is perfect, cause we're dealing with the park and we're dealing with the kids. And just like everybody said, Ferndale's having the same issues too. What we need to try to do is ramp it down a little bit and build, uh, more of a culture, I think, of respect and mutual respect.
Starts at home.
Yeah, and it does start at home. And I think that's a message that we can all send tonight is that, you know, make sure you're teaching your kids to be respectful to everyone and make sure you're respectful to your kids and you're modeling the kind of behavior that you want them to display. So, yeah, you're right, man. It does.
Well, that was the thing too. There was other parents there last night. They was walking around. They didn't mind and probably moms, I think, most hurt with it. And then my wife overheard them criticizing the fact that I was talking to these kids, asking them about if they didn't agree. So that, you know, there's another whole, another whole, so it's like, it's like you can't, man, I'm gonna criticize them. Right. The good thing is about, you know, how this is recording into the windmills and things slow down. At times. Yeah.
I mean, I'm actually amazed that teenagers drive there and hang out.
Yeah.
Have a car that they can go anywhere.
They're in and out of my mind.
I can understand if they're walking around.
But only so many of them can fit in a park. You can only shut five to six or ten of your friends in a park.
I remember that.
We all remember that, but we, you know, I hear what she said. We never drove to a, uh, city park to hang out.
Right.
And I will say we drip cameras over there, so our police department can now monitor it in real time. And we have had a decline in the number of complaints since we took the the walls off the two houses over there. So that was a big help in terms of, I think, increasing the number of, uh, things that were going on there that, uh, were gonna fall.
Yeah.
They're there.
Thank you very much for coming in.
We'll, we'll help out one and we'll all work together. No problems solved. We'll try to make it better. We'll keep you in the loop unless you know we have a meeting, something like that.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm there all the time. So, I mean, anything I can do to pitch in and be a part of, absolutely.
Another note, it's not just here in Ferndale. I'm in a bunch of other city groups because of my business. And it's awesome. It's really a good for every city that has a bigger park has the same complaints that we do. The litter and the turmoil and the children. And also lack of teen programs. It's every city. So we kinda do some cool stuff here and then maybe some other cities.
You know, and that's a delivery yesterday, you know, we gotta have our business. But it's tough to find something that is attractive for the teens too, because we were all teens ourselves. Let's be honest, okay? You know, when you're a teen, sometimes you're looking for places that are not as closely supervised, you know, the rest of society would like you to be. So it's hard to find something that's fun that will actually attract the teens. Cause we've done everything over the course of the last, you know, twenty-five years to try to get kids involved in, you know, recreation programs and things like that. And it's always gonna mix its stats. So, keep looking, keep thinking and trying.
Anyone else for public discussion? You know, remember. Who's to consent agenda one through eleven councils?
Move approval of consent agenda items one through eleven.
Discussion, discussion on one through eleven. Uh, I'd like to see if there's anyone here from fourteen, ten east, ten mile. Events.
Fourteen thirty.
Fourteen thirty east ten mile. See no one, uh, who's listening. And fifteen seventy-five east eight mile off fresh fish and seafood. No one. And one sixty west nine mile, S and H X sign. No one. Okay, this is to administrative reports. Orders, uh, to amend chapter eight point zero two vacant and the standard structures per stream.
Mr. Mayor, this, uh, ordinance is the, uh, schedule for inspections and the number of actions and how we'll inspect them. The timeframe part, we don't expect them to carry out. Mr. Finkley may speak on it if you have, uh, additional questions, but the administration recommends approval on first reading.
Council?
Uh, this is to help these works office more effectively manage the, uh, vacant and abandoned structures registration process.
Do you have a history background? You had a downturn of home foreclosure moving to a month, those are here. And now we wanna move it back to like six months?
Yeah.
This, we're kinda moved back where we were originally, uh, but, uh, I think we still keep it within our reach.
Yeah, it was a very exciting process because obviously during the foreclosure crisis, at one point we had, uh, we think like one in seven homes was a park, was foreclosure and one in twelve were vacant. So, uh, you know, obviously we need to keep that tight handle on number of vacancies that had ensured they were registered for the mortgage companies to participate in the process. Now, uh, we feel comfortable modifying this program. It will streamline the process and allow for more effective.
Right, right. Do you need a motion for me to ask questions?
Uh, you can bring this question.
Okay, cool. Just one. Um, I am unclear how moving from one month to six months would make it more streamlined.
Thanks. Yeah. Plus now we have cities we had before where actually able to monitor better, so less of them.
What specific department is overseeing these properties? Is this building? Is this code? Is this a combination? So it increases the amount of inspections, but extends the length of the license or the registration there.
I move a triple, uh, ordinance to amend chapter eight zero two vacant and abandoned. Support.
Orders to amend title nine, public peace morals and welfare, chapter nine point eight four rental responsibility, second reading.
Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends approval of ordinance and second reading.
Council?
Move approval of the, uh, to amend the ordinance title nine, public peace morals and welfare, chapter nine point eight four rental assistance, support.
Question? Question? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was, uh, highly recommended by, uh, the school superintendent and requested multiple times in the school board as well. So, I think this will be a great tool for our police officers and for, uh, tools for everyone else involved who are, uh, better compliant.
And three, orders to amend title six, chapter six point zero four animal second reading.
Um, Mr. Mayor, the administration recommends approval of this ordinance on the second reading. Uh, council and Melissa Sullivan, they wish to speak, uh, in better length than this. She was, uh, involved heavily in the, uh, drafting those disordinants. Uh, this ordinance, uh, basically events are animal, uh, ordinances and, uh, it, uh, falls forth in a very comprehensive manner, uh, whatever we find.
Um, I just, I just wanna reiterate how much time and effort went into this. And, um, I really, like, I think that people underestimate the amount of, um, policy that happens behind the scenes because we get these neat little packets and then we make the comments and, um, you know, then we take a vote. And I feel like the hours and hours of laborious work that happened to make these things, um, come to fruition are really, I'm very grateful for them. Um, this, this update of our animal control ordinances in my very personal opinion, um, but also thankfully in our city administration opinion, um, really brings ours to the up to the twentieth century and up until, uh, to date for best practices in humane animal care and control. And it really puts the, um, protection into the title of our animal protection officer, which is what our APO is. Um, her entire goal as a as a member of our community and as a member of our, um, administrative staff is, or as our, uh, state staff is to protect the animals and protect their owners and protect the community. So this empowers our animal protection officer and our police departments and our courts, um, to better protect both our residents and our parks. I would love to make a motion to approve.
More questions? Um, I just wanna, uh, make it clear that as, um, council members probably stated, that this is very hard work that goes into this. But it isn't just words that are put on paper. We intend to enforce these. These are laws that are, uh, put in place at the state and local level. And we intend to enforce them. So please be on notice. You should be watching your kids. You should be humanely taking care of your animals. You should pay attention to the change of, uh, of the registration process in the park, which is gonna be so much more efficient. And remember, it is not the administration's responsibility to knock on your door and tell you that it's time to renew licenses for whether it's your home, making registrations, your animals. And it's not the city administration's responsibility to really arrange, have the trash picked up from Taco Bell from your kids. So these are very important things that are being enacted by the council today. This is by the request from citizens, from the school district, from the police, and from those of us who live here on a daily basis. So please be unnoticed and it will be enforced.
And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd also like to recommend, uh, Melissa Schwartz for accountability and sort of, well, as well as, uh, Jennifer Thomas.
And four, planning to mention case twenty-one dash zero five special land use, special minor, uh, border repair, two zero nine zero three, under, Mr. Campbell.
Uh, it is executive states, um, consecutive property that runs from George, or George to Hayes. It's the entire, like, lot. And this is a pretty big lot. Um, I don't know. There, I don't know why the applicant isn't here. There, there's sometimes it's lost in translation. Where I could have done it is Steve, who's in the back. Uh, I gave him the wrong night last night. So I wouldn't blame the applicant if, if he's not here. But I can, uh, tell you what the conditions were. Basically no parking on George or Hayes. Um, I think there's two solutions that they try to do parking them each, either or. I can, we can work on a TCO basically saying that there's no parking potentially to the residential street. However, um, the, you know, but basically they have to go into Hayes. They would actually have directional signs saying you couldn't park on George at all. Um, there was some concern because George actually seemed a little bit of additional traffic from the secretary of state about how that might be. But basically there were actually directional signs saying you have to enter in through Hayes over there. Um, there's only one bay. So they do meet the parking requirements and I can guarantee the house that exists on the lot cannot, will not ever be used again as a residential home. Then the loss of, or it's not conforming use, it's lost, thus it cannot be a house again unless they appear before the DVA four barriers. And that is not the intent.
Does, uh, Mayor Council have any questions, Mr. Campbell?
Uh, I have a quick question because of a, an issue that I continue to have and that my neighbors continue to bring up to me.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's vehicles that are like.
Sitting there?
Yeah, that are like totaled and they're on the city street, which I'm told has actually caused an accident with one of my.
Well, so I would put in here failure to abide by the rules regarding George and Hayes will result in immediate revocation of your special land use and rear business license. Had that in this condition.
I think we have something similar in the case of Mash.
I don't think we have that specific resolution, but we can have it here and I can attach that to the business license the next time they have renewal as well.
Yeah, because it's becoming.
Yeah, well, it's constant. So, yes. So basically then we can ticket them and we'll deal with that. So I will, um, alert code of that particular issue. Um, but, uh, they might have changed ownership actually, so I don't know. They might know some of the history, but they might be letting it slide loser than it had before. However, what I would recommend is adding a condition saying failure to abide by the rules that you can park, that you cannot park any car for service on East George or East Hayes will result in immediate revocation of the special land use and or illegal park business license.
Do we have a motion to that effect, Council?
Move with that center. So here's what I would say. I would move for.
Right, yeah.
I would, I would move for a conditional approval of, of this based on the conditions noted in the report and the conditions stated. I don't want to buy, you know, if the applicant should agree to that. He, I mean, doesn't really have much of a choice, but he should agree to that too. If he doesn't.
To be aware of it.
Right. If, if I could tie that language up, it's a little tighter. Violation of such rules, uh, such holistic rules can result in immediate administrative revocation of business license.
There you go. So we don't have to.
So they don't have to come, they don't have to, you know, they.
Does that turn back the program?
Don't have to go for a regular rolls.
And a special.
Sure, no, no.
A few cases that we.
I, I, I think with an intensive use like auto repairs where if they do park on the street, it's a little more applicable than something that's easily curable, where this is basically based on passes.
We're, we're gonna replace the word can with the word net.
Is that in the record?
In the record. Yeah, written down here.
Section? And it moves us to, uh, five. Special, please play one day of six, special land use, special warehouse, one thirty-six east ten mile.
So all these pieces really, um, so this is a, a building that's right actually next to, it's just to the west of Cozy. Um, so, uh, Mr. Smolkin actually wants to use it as a warehouse. It's not, so the one thing that I will say, we have reduced warehouses, well, what I would say, we have reduced licensed warehouses. The ones I'm not sure about, you know, that are storage facilities. What I can say about what, uh, Mr. Smolkin, the applicant is proposing is this is not a hobby shop. This is not his personal stuff. He sells stuff via eBay. So his stuff on eBay will be out of stored there. He will also have an office where he sells eBay stuff out of. He also owns rental homes and a realty company and will store some things of that nature. Now, um, uh, no offense. Yeah, yeah. No offense to Steve, but it's not, it's not my favorite thing in the world. However, it is hard to find a different use for this property too, based on the amount of space it has, because it has two parking spots.
It has no parking.
Yeah, there's literally two parking spots. So, so, yeah.
Can I ask a question about, um, the type of products that you sell? Even none of them are, or if they are, um, combustible, flammable, will be properly stored?
So, and fire will do an inspection post this.
Let me check whether we're setting ourselves up for this kind of thing, really. Letting a bunch of lithium batteries and.
Fair enough, fair enough. And there, there's a little sensitivity over in town.
I have a big sensitivity to fire. We all know this.
No, no, I don't mean, you mean that. I mean, blooms as well over there.
I'll move approval of the, uh, special land use, one three six, it's ten mile.
And, uh, that includes any recommendations in the plan.
And, and the standard we noted previously.
And the standard we noted previously, there is violation of itself in the, uh, administrative revocation of the license and suspensions of campus.
Any more discussion over that? Any more discussions? Lords and commissions.
We have one. I don't know if we have any, uh, vacancies or not. One of the applicants, she's, uh, she did a great job on that.
Yeah.
I think you just go ahead and make the appointment. That would be my recommendation. It's honestly, uh, recommend the, uh, appointment. It will be to the, uh, environmental sustainability committee and also Heather Hopkins.
I move that we appoint my dear friend, Heather Shakers, to be the environmental sustainability council as well as Heather Hopkins to be here.
Okay, second that.
Question, discussion? New business? Want to have any new business?
No, Mr. Mayor, it's new business. I'll do it now. I just wanna really recognize our, uh, fire department and our police department for the outstanding job that they did last night at the fire at project, uh, fifty-four down on, uh, Patel and Lurwood Heights there. It was a rather substantial fire. And, uh, they did an outstanding job. I want to thank our mutual aid partners in Madison Heights, Ferndale, and Royal Wolf for the good work that they did as well. Uh, I was out there last night. Alyssa was with me. Uh, they did a fantastic job. And, uh, they got that fire under control very quickly and it just, uh, shows how important it is to have outstanding first responders that know what they do, know what they're supposed to do, provide the job and do it well. It's equally important to have these kind of, uh, uh, mutual aid agreements with these other communities where we can serve a great number of first responders into a serious situation at the time. And this works out well for us and it works out well for our mutual aid partners as well. So, uh, again, great work. Uh, the fire remains under investigation. We have not heard yet from the county sheriff's department as to the cause of fire, but what we do obviously, uh, we'll keep there and council inform you. We'll release anything that we can release as public when we get it.
You have a new business? Do we, uh, have a worse study about one item, parts and the other items in the next year or future?
I think, well, we can schedule that, uh, before the end of the year to talk about that. But I think, you know, it's, I want to also think about possible solution. And, you know, as Matt said, he, he, he could articulate the problem, but he said a couple of times, I really don't have any solutions. And so, you know, I think maybe we need to think a little bit. And so, you know, I think maybe we need to think a little bit uh creatively about this because solutions are not easy. This is not something, this is a problem like like Ripoll said, you know, Fernia has the problem and Alyssa said she lost dogs and it's a problem that's in every community. So without a solve it, we might be able to mitigate it and prove it and make it better.
Go for a fire for our.
I will say that I was pleased that the schools recognized it was a problem and used their resources to have one of their employees go over there and spend an hour over there every uh night, and again, I think that's for the school, I think that's helping uh to keep some problems checked over there. But uh as we all talked about, some disrespect starts at home and, you know, parents are watching this video. You know, make sure that you're talking to the kids about the importance of treating every other human and every animal and every everything that you come across with respect.
Do you have a new business for the council?
Oh, one more thing, I I'm sure that I speak for Mayor and Council. Uh I wanna remember the outstanding contributions of Larry Burleson, everything that he has done for this community over the course of many decades. Uh you know, when I think about community people and volunteers, the first people who come to my mind were always Larry and Teddy Burleson for all the many things that they've done for this community and, you know, Larry's Larry's lost, it hurts, it hurts emotionally because, you know, we're all so close to him, he was so important to this community and assisted for so many years. But it's also flat out huge loss to the uh to the whole community because the level of volunteerism and the number of community projects that we participate in was extraordinary, I mean, most of the ramps that were built in the city Hazel Park in the last thirty years were built by Larry Burleson. So, you know, it's a it's a it's a huge loss, it's a huge loss emotionally, it's a huge void in our volunteer community. So uh biggest sympathy to his family and uh God bless Larry, he will never forget you.
Uh so this is the last thing I say because I'm going on vacation right after this, so pay a lot of the E two after I'm done, no offense. Uh that I just wanted to update you guys, I want to thank the efforts of Tom Jones, um Dusty, Harbor and Jared Gajos. We did an update during the Oakstem, which is the tree placement planting program. So we put it out three, three weeks ago, three and a half weeks ago, uh and basically we already had C one of the nineties spoken for. So I think uh basically we need to ninety, um no matter what, I let the county commission know that it was a success and that hopefully the planting will start this fall depending on how the birds go, um depending on labor shortage or not. So but uh I'm very pleased with the results, um and again, it's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of different departments. Be cool, so.
Thank you, you know what, Jeff Campbell's just awesome and outstanding, every single day that he shows up. I wish you, I wish you a happy vacation. Have you ever seen anyone leave like that before, now with Ash, you think this guy can't wait to get out of here already?
Uh just like to announce when we start our next phase of Woodward Heights uh alert program, um October nineteenth. Uh where we left off at Cayuga, we should get just past Harden in this run and we also want to do uh don't include me. So we're gonna try to paint all the way to the corner on this run also. Uh also currently we do have our sidewalk program, baby and Melville Streets are currently, you see in the uh, it's a night. They'll complete uh everything north of nine with the programs, so I'm excited to get south in nine mile next spring. Thank you. Student, um there is the trash day in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
Wonder if you could address the proper location of trash cans in the street or out of the street? So in Hazel Park, we asked everybody to not in the street. Out in the street, not in the, yeah, not in the. Your parkway and also have our street sweeper that runs and guess what, yes, used to have to go around cars, now it's around garbage can. So so we ask people, note, do your best to uh come up with some ideas, it's harder than everybody. Those streets are cooperative, it's kind of, you go down the next street and ten neighbors all have it in the street.
Yeah, one knows it, then two and then five and then.
Right, so it's the same, but and even when the garbage truck goes through, we direct them to put it on the parkway when they're done. So we need everybody to cooperate and try to keep our streets clean and leaves are starting to fall.
We may go over that somewhere and put it out, you know.
We can put it on Facebook and we'll say, don't put your can in the street, we'll put it in the C U P U's letter, don't put your can in the street. Everybody wants to have, ah you know, G F L, run their crew from someplace else, they're not familiar with Hazel Park and sometimes they'll put the can from the streets out. We we try very hard to get everyone not to put them in the street, do not put your cans in the street. Yes.
Well, in some areas, someone decides to park it in someone else's house, their garbage don't get picked up.
That's a nice, a good question, and we do have the foreman for G F L, he's been our foreman for a few years now, so we've worked out most of these bugs and he's on site every day, he tries to remedy these problems, he addresses them. He tries very hard, fairly quickly. So I I think we've come a long way, um yes, we do have the automated machines, but um you know, part of that, I think we were talking about before, they can run a truck with one guy now instead of multiple people and all the labor shortage right now, that's what's getting them through. Um through our SACRA meetings, some of the other communities aren't being finished every night. You know, we're actually doing better in Hazel Park, which you have felt, than some other communities that have some other providers that are way behind now, so.
Imagine if he said one day a week.
Yeah, I know.
It's great, I mean, switch to the five days before COVID ever hit and the labor shortage.
If we hadn't, it would have been, it'd have been a nightmare.
Be stepping over our own.
Right, it would be. So and that's why you gotta get those cars off the street, you've got someplace to put them, you know, we don't want to be need, we don't want to let anyone take it. But this is why you have to.
Yeah, talk to your neighbors and use their driveways, um I worked in the day, my neighbor uses my driver, I have a couple neighbors that use my driveway. Um they'll shoot you a text and say, hey, garbage day, and I'm like, park it up, go ahead, they don't, most of them don't even ask me where they used to.
Um usually uh second week, first and second week in the summer, we will post that. Um it's kind of a number like SACRA puts out, you know, hey, you know, love the week of the fourth, bringing the leaves, there's nowhere to take them after a certain date, so we will, we will be posting them.
I just want to make sure I got reposted because a lot of people forget and.
When you don't, we we don't rent leaves in the street, right? Sorry, a little sarcasm.
Do not break your records, we will ticket you for that. So we in the hours.
Just speaking in regards to uh an item that was on the consent agenda regarding the ice arena. And it's been some time since I've been here, so um let me give you a minute of a background, which is um a year ago I took over for Angela Sylvester, who's the operations manager at the ice arena. And since then, it's been under my direction. Um moving forward, um we have had a few um operational deficits, let's call them, in the last year. Uh the ice arena, like the league was built in nineteen ninety-seven. So lately we've been having some HVAC issues going out because, well, the building's over, you know, twenty plus years old at this point. Um and I know that you guys have approved some HVAC systems and so here we are at a point where in fact, one of our links is out due to a very, very expensive cost that was foreseeable a long time ago. And so this eighteen thousand dollar expense that's on here is to prevent or try to at least solve, try to solve this issue. And so um I don't like bringing those to you guys, I've been here for, you know, seven and a half years, I know where we were financially before, but um at the ice arena, some operational expenses have needed to be made this year. That's the gist of what I want.
And and I want to thank you and Larry over there for problem solving this and bringing us a much lower cost solution than what we originally thought and hopefully this was, that's also thank you for, you know, looking and guide, doing a little bit deeper guide to try to find a solution.
Sure thing, does anyone have any question?
Thanks, Ray.
Good evening, uh just wanted to update uh on our sewer lining completed through the streets, three jobs. But I should have set me up to thank the residents of Orchard Avenue in Sonoma, West of I seventy-five, operations. Were done, that is completed, and I also want to send out extremely uh thanks to the residents of Cayuga that have been dealing with us for over a month, data holes and ripping up the road and causing a storm and everything. Do anything over there, so that works completed to now. So they'll have their street, you know, nice and tidy for the holiday season.
Tim, I just wanted to say thanks for bringing together this list is up in.
Yeah.
Or water resource.
Yeah, as we hear, as we hear about more than Adam, um you know, those items, we didn't know existed, we solved some of them. So we tried to reach out to whoever it was and a couple of them couldn't be responsive, I uh looked them up on the website and usually through one of the department help agency, some sort of. As we, as we add more, as we get more from mine. Yeah, we do have a lot of resources for people who have difficulty paying their water bills and then have, they qualify financially, there's assistance out there for them.
I was gonna, Ed pretty much covered it with uh fire.
Go ahead, come on up here. Everyone likes to see you, uh you know.
I shot for your policy.
Up here on your, are you good on the program Halloween? Um yeah, we'll have uh as we typically do per treat night, we'll have uh officers holding over for their shift and the men and guys shit can't do them, I'm in really, uh our reserves out there also. Um yeah, like I said, thank you to Madison Ice Farm down row, our department, our guys, they all did a great job. Chief started, mentioned uh everyone worked out well together and so it's super unfortunate that it happened and we don't know the cause of it yet, but I really hope the uh it wasn't destruction because that really bothers me a lot, so hopefully that's something that gets. Um and another good story, um I think Mike Prokono with the treatment soon have that uh soon. Uh there was a five-year-old girl um that almost died, they had to rush to the hospital and police department and fire department worked together great on that. Uh mother reached out recently, she just got home from the hospital, is doing really good, so. Happy about that. Thanks to.
It's great to have good news.
Yeah, and farmers and the parks, yeah, I I do have some thoughts on that. It does start at home for sure.
This is two good cases from City of Three.
Um yes, I just wanted to say um that there are ordinances that relate the conduct of parks that the councils were tired and has um with the administration's help, there is now the update of the parental responsibility. And so once again, I just want to remind those cameras, as Mr. Clopeter said, and that uh these ordinances will be enforced, so please uh maybe you could talk to your kids about behavior at these parks and the conduct on school grounds. And maybe if we all work together, um these ordinances won't have to be enforced through my office.
Yeah, because here's it, with this new ordinance, you really should talk to your kids because if you don't talk to your kids, maybe we're gonna come and talk to you. So this puts the onus on the parents, make sure that you're that you're teaching this whole respect begins at home process. If not, you know, okay, well, now we have a whole new tool, so uh we don't want to use it. We want everyone to cooperate and to be nice and treat everyone that are parks and all the other people at the park with respect, if not, well, okay, we'll do what we have to do to ensure we have a park. That's right.
If I, if I could add one comment to that, um if behavior does start at home, we have these issues that trickle out into preparation that includes, you know, behavioral um problems from parents, even at basketball and so forth, so I wouldn't suggest that this is just um, you know, exclusive to South Park, a- as you said, Alyssa, it is truly a um much larger issue with, you know, many cities at hand, whether, you know, no matter what the dynamic of the children are, whether it's at-risk children or not, um you are seeing seeing these behavioral issues and you're seeing them from parents as well, um so so that's just a consideration.
Okay, you're you're absolutely right, I mean, when uh.
Even even coaches.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Even youth coaches, which are supposed to be role models, role models.
It's just about caring, all of the hard work that everyone did to both parks and donate, all the grand money just to show the parent work so hard and everyone worked so hard. Just about caring about the community, it's about showing and demonstrating, setting the example. But now these ordinances, um they give much more, um as Mr. Culberson said, um opportunity to hold accountability and it should start at home, so um definitely, you know, you're on notice.
Yeah, you're on hold.
Sounds like if it doesn't start at home, there will be, it will, you will start.
You will start seeing us, so what this means, let us be clear here, if our kids misbehave, we can take action against you. So you're responsible for our master parental responsibility needs. So and again, it like Serene said, and uh Alyssa and Mike Ripoll and I, we were at uh a wonderful community event for United Old School and everyone had a great time and it was such a wonderful, harmonious uh night of families and the community coming together with the school district and those school personnel, uh had a just a great, wonderful night. But while I was here, the school superintendent, she expressed to me her concerns too about the the level of, you know, uh disrespect and sometimes fighting that's happening in school, and I hope it's calmed down a little bit and I think they asked. But it's important for everyone to model good behavior, including the parents. Because, sorry, parents, I'm gonna say it, sometimes the problem begins with you and you need to look in the mirror about how you're acting and the kind of behaviors that you're modeling for your children. So uh again, we want to see safe city, modest and safe schools, want people to get along, treat everyone with respect. So anyways, I'm sorry, I did.
Your comments.
Okay, uh once again, I will remind everyone that Michigan's system of municipal finances is highly broken and I think that you think that I say that just now to keep my street going. But I say it because it's absolutely true. When I look on social media and I see people complaining about high taxes, well, there's a reason for that, okay? It's not that we're irresponsible spenders here in Hazel Park, it's that the entire system is completely broken and it leaves communities with very little choice in terms of uh the solutions that they can avoid when they have a financial crisis. The interaction between the heavenly amendment and proposal A keeps our revenues from our existing property tax base in a vice. Okay, that's not to say that anybody up here wants to throw away all of the caption protection, no. But there are some tweaks and minor variations in that that we could implement that will still keep the gaps in place and at the same time uh allow the city to have just a little more revenue to operate. And I'm gonna be talking more about this if I have to do a town meeting on it, I might want to show it up, I'll uh film it. I'll uh, film it and torture you with it, uh, in the coming years, because everybody needs to go and understand the true nature of just how broken this whole uh, crap show of uh, municipal finances in Michigan. Don't get me started about revenue sharing. The governor and the legislature, they've added themselves on the back because it gives a two percent increase in revenue sharing. The rate of inflation is running over five percent, this is negative for us. So everybody else in the state budget, which they hold, not cities. So that's a problem, so when there is a problem here, you also need to hold accountable your representatives that in, in Lansing, this is primarily fundamentally a state problem. We've lost over thirteen billion dollars in uh, revenue sharing from the state of Michigan, and that should have come to the city of Hazel Park. Uh, Alyssa sent me some cool graphics that I'm gonna post on these websites tomorrow from the MML. And it really illustrates just how, you know, the state really has, you know, committed its obligations with respect overall, as a governor. So the problem is, if you have a grossly, you know, inequitable tax situation that falls very negatively onto, you know, new homebuyers. And let me explain the real picture here, okay? You own your house, you're paying three thousand dollars in taxes, you sell your house, that's worth you paying six thousand dollars in taxes. Um, that's a net gain, the city of Hazel Park is zero, you're alive. The headly limits, you can't get more than the rate of inflation from your existing tax base. So when those houses sell and we collect those taxes, we see the rate of inflation from our existing tax base, we have to roll back our notes to accommodate that. So you're paying twice as much in taxes so that I can get some existing home, or a little tiny tax cut that I don't need to charge. So those are some of the things that are wrong with this system that uh, we need to solve, and there's some open legislatures that do just that, and uh, we need to help everybody at home to pressure the legislature to pass on it. Do you want, do you have any other questions? Talk about, wanna talk about water rates, do you wanna talk about, uh, what do you wanna talk about?
Lowest increase of water rates this year, any year.
Thank you, we had quite a percent, a percent increase, so. We did pass our, we did pass our red uh, uh, you know, stuff.
Um, I wanna thank um, everybody that uh, either participates by watching on Facebook, or by coming in person, or by contacting one of us, one of us here on council, or our city administration with concerns and questions. If you are um, only posting on social media, the ability of us to answer those things factually and efficiently and effectively is, is seriously demoted. It is difficult, I, I work a full-time job, everybody up here works a full-time job. Um, I often will get tagged in something and not see it for a couple days. Um, that doesn't mean that I, that I don't care about the problem that you're having, it doesn't mean that I'm not concerned about it, or that I don't have an answer for it, but oftentimes, I don't have access to get it to you. And additionally, many of these are so, such complicated issues that one, the post on Facebook is not going to cover it, it needs to be a discussion, it needs to be an interactive conversation. Um, that being said, there is a fantastic website that I would love people to check out, it's called Save My City, and it's save M I city dot word. Um, it talks about the system of municipal finance that is put forward by the Michigan Public League, which is a, it's a bipartisan um, initiative here in the state to really address the issues that we have with the um, revenue sharing. And I will tell you that at the conference that we attended, they pre- they presented this two percent increase to us like a golden egg, and I was so offended that when we had a meeting here in Hazel Park with Jimmy Moss and Regina Weiss, I brought that up, I was like, I don't want to hear two percent, when I know there's another three percent that we need, like that's not, it's unacceptable, it's not an equality there for me, but I digress, um, please look for some information.
No, tell it, tell it.
I can talk about taxes all day long, um, oftentimes, I will talk to people about taxes when I'm, when I'm out in social confront, and people are like, why, and I'm like, because it's important, you need to. In any case, um, I wanna thank the city for recognizing breast cancer awareness, and then we get those, um, info, those websites and those access points over to the city manager during the state term. Um, we can get those on our social media, I also want to reiterate my appreciation for the Hazel Park Police Department Department and our city administration and our court with their district court in helping me um, to uh, create the high-risk response team during the pandemic and implementing that here in our city um, in support of domestic violence awareness and prevention and protection for our residents. Um, I also want to echo, shout out to thank you for the uh, Hazel Park Fire Department and Police Department for their cooperation and teamwork last night to really um, mitigate the damage done to the condo development and to the people that already are living in that condo development. Also, the Robertson Home Builders actually came out last night and spoke to the residents that live there. They spoke to the city manager, and they spoke to the fire department, and then they were instantly on it today. Um, getting cleanup done, making sure that things were secured so that the neighborhood is still safe and it's accessible, and there's no damage to adjacent properties, which is no end word. Um, reminder again, maybe if we're talking about Trump or Treat, October thirty, this is our park, one, one for register. People can email the uh, recreation department, and uh, you'll see Mike McCall and I there for sure. Uh, we both have our costumes already picked out, and I already bought my candy, allergy free candy, so come see me. Um, and I just really, I wanna thank the city also for pushing forward with the Oakstom Initiative, eighty-one out of nine trees already spoken for is really, it's been a, it's been a long October, and it's only the beginning, um, but this election coming up is exciting, and um, don't forget to vote. Um, I do have a question, can people drop their ballots in just the city ballot box?
No, you may use the ballot box also by the recreation department that is functioning as well.
Okay, so there are two.
You can put them in the box, here, you can put them in the box with the recreation department, that's located on the left side of the building, or you can bring them to the city clerk during the hours that, to, not the city clerk.
Or you can mail them. Or you can mail them.
You can mail them. You can mail them.
Wonderful, so don't forget to vote, uh, and then the polls will be open regular hours on, on November second. Wonderful, so don't forget to vote, uh, and then the polls will be open regular hours on, on November second. Good point, thank you, we're gonna be safe. Good point, thank you, we're gonna be safe.
Uh, I'd like to thank the city for passing our, uh, the breast cancer proclamation Uh, I'd like to thank the city for passing our, uh, the breast cancer proclamation Uh, I'd like to thank the city for passing our, uh, the breast cancer proclamation